We'd like to call to order tonight the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. Let the rule call show that all members of the council are here and a special welcome to our two new council members sworn in just this afternoon, Councilmember Karen Lane and Councilmember Tom Hewitt, as well as Councilwoman Cory Rushton who begins his second term tonight. So congratulations to you three and welcome aboard for two new ones. By way of special, excuse me, aisle number three tonight is our opening ceremonies and each week we take turn hosting an opening ceremony and tonight it's Councilmember Don Christensen's turn. Councilman?
Thank you. Thank you. You know, this is a kind of a unique opportunity for me because I also had the, was scheduled for the opening ceremony on the last council meeting of 2011. So at that time, we talked about some things that we've done during the past year that improved the city, helped make it better. I'd like to now suggest some ideas or items that we can work on during the coming year. May we resolve to receive an eighth consecutive National Night Out Award from the National Association of Town Watchers and participate in our 29th National Night Out. May we continue to host annual financial fitness fairs at West Valley City Family Fitness Center for all residents. Receive an 18th consecutive Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Award by the City Finance Department. Continue to improve our city by planting new trees within the city limits and especially at West Ridge Golf Course. Host a student exchange with our sister city of Nantou, Taiwan, Republic of China and dedicate the Chinese Heritage Friendship Gate. May we resolve to increase the ridership on the track's green line between West Valley City and downtown Salt Lake City. Continue to host an annual pet fest at the West Valley Animal Shelter. May we resolve relationships with our friends in Mexico. Continue to make West Valley City a sustainable city through use of alternate fuel vehicles and energy savings. Resolve to help even more underprivileged children and families through our giving treaties. Continue the reduction of major crimes in the city. Continue to develop the Valley Fair Mall. Continue the record of private development projects and private capital investment within West Valley City. And thus, continue to provide new jobs in the city. Continue the free summer and winter concert series and other free exhibits hosted by the Utah Cultural Celebration Center and increase their average attendance. Continue to develop the Fairborn Station at City Center and improve the livability of the area around City Hall. Clearly, there are many things that we need to do to continue to meet our goals of unity, pride, and progress in making West Valley City a great place to live. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. And we do have a lot of great things going on in this city and challenges to face and areas to improve. Appreciate that reminder. Do we have any scouts with us tonight? I didn't see any scout groups come in. Sometimes they sneak in a little late. And we do have the approval minutes to be considered tonight at both December 13th and December 20th regular meetings. Anyone like to make a motion there?
Mayor moved for approval of the December 13th and December 20th regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion of the minutes? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
It's a five minutes and when they are recognized, they come up to the microphone and all comments shall be directed to the mayor and council. Although, for your information, we do have our city manager and executive staff in attendance. No person addressing the city council during the comment period should be allowed to comment more than once during that comment period. And speakers should not expect any debate or dialogue with the mayor, city council, or city staff. Although, if you bring up specific issues, we often do try to point you in the right direction, but unfortunately, we can't solve all the world's problems in this half hour. But we do appreciate people who take the time to come. And those, if we do run out of time before everyone's allowed to speak, I know that we're here every Tuesday unless it's a fifth Tuesday, and so you're always welcome to come back in future weeks. In some weeks, we have nobody show up. In other weeks, we have a packed schedule and we do have a full schedule tonight of people wishing to speak to us. The first one is Paulina Vazovkina. How's that?
Vazovkina.
Thank you. Vazovkina. All right. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Paulina Vazovkina and I've been a volunteer at the West Valley City Animal Shelter since April of 2011, primarily working on photographing the adoptable dogs. With help of other hardworking volunteers, wonderful shelter staff, and amazing rescue groups, we've been able to achieve many adoptions. I prepared a speech regarding the disadvantages of carbon monoxide gas chamber which the West Valley City Animal Shelter uses regularly. Unfortunately, it's over five minutes. When my time runs out, Jay Bresch, another animal shelter volunteer, will continue to make the remaining points. For my work attempting to find homes for the shelter animals, it's clear that West Valley City and nearby residents are very dissatisfied with the West Valley City Animal Shelter. The shelter has a very negative reputation due to its use of the gas chamber as well as its high euthanasia rates. The shelter euthanizes approximately 10% of dogs that come in and 80% of its cats, and over 50% of all euthanasia at the shelter is performed by the gas chamber. A simple Google search is easy proof of this, which gives the shelter a one out of five star review and lists comments by citizens such as, "I hope these people can live with themselves, knowing what they do to poor unsuspecting animals every day. This is a place that puts animals in a gas chamber when they could at least euthanize them in a more humane way." A petition titled "Ban in Humane Gassing of Shelter Pets in Utah," which came out in October, has been signed by 2,388 people. It's clear that the public is completely aware and is strongly against the use of the carbon monoxide gas chamber at the shelter. This evening, I'm going to explain how carbon monoxide facilitates an inhumane death for animals, poses significant health risks to shelter workers, and provides an unsafe working environment, and how it's also significantly more expensive as compared to euthanasia by the intravenous injection of the barbiturate sodium pentobarbital. The American Humane Association states that euthanasia by injection of sodium pentobarbital is the most humane method of euthanizing shelter animals. If successful, the gas chamber can take up to 25 to 30 minutes to end an animal's life, whereas euthanasia by injection causes loss of consciousness within three to five seconds and clinical death within two to five minutes. In a gas chamber, animals lose consciousness and brain function only after their organs have shut down, causing prolonged suffering and distress. In comparison, euthanasia by injection causes animals to lose consciousness and brain function before their vital organs shut down, leading to a quick death and little suffering. It's important to note that old, young, and injured animals are often biologically unable to absorb the gas as readily as larger or healthier animals, which prolongs trauma and stress. The populations being euthanized at the shelter do include seniors and animals under four months old. Old, sick, or injured animals may have poor blood pressure or weak hearts, which may delay the effects of carbon monoxide, causing them to experience distress prior to unconsciousness. Animals under the age of four months may not have the lung capacity to inhale enough carbon monoxide to be effective. In addition to this, it's also very important to understand that animals don't always die in gas chambers. As we remember from a very personal example of Andrea the cat, who was euthanized twice in the gas chambers at the West Valley Animal Shelter in October and survived both occasions, this is not an anomaly. The chamber often has to be run several times since animals are not often dead after the first round, providing prolonged suffering and distress. Clearly, the gas chamber takes longer to end an animal's life, causes prolonged stress prior to death, and is not always effective, as compared to the sodium pentobarbital injection. It's obvious that this method of euthanasia is inhumane, as stated by Doug Pachima, the nation's animal euthanasia expert. The animal is in a warm or hot blocks, usually with other animals. They don't know what's going on. The hiss of the gas is going on. They get dizzy and they panic. Fights can break out and animals' calls can sometimes be heard. These are inappropriate conditions. Animals deserve the right to a calm, stress-free, and dignified death. This is only possible to achieve through sodium pentobarbital injection. According to the American Humane Association, which has been directly involved in training shelter euthanasia technicians on properly administering euthanasia by injection for decades, states that euthanasia by injection is the safest way for humans to euthanize shelter animals. Carbon monoxide poses dangers to humans because it's colorless, tasteless, odorless, and highly explosive. A gas chamber must be constantly checked and maintained to ensure no cracks in the structure or failing seals. When carbon monoxide is released in a confined area, it can cause asphyxiation, kidney damage, or induced coma. Furthermore, the gas chamber jeopardizes the safety of shelter workers. In 2009, gas buildup caused the door of Lincoln County, North Carolina Shelter to explode open. The incident put an animal control officer in the emergency room. In 2008, an explosion in the Erdel County, North Carolina Animal Services gas chamber revealed that, contrary to recommendations, the equipment in the vicinity of the chamber was not explosion-proof. A shelter worker was in the room at the time and other personnel were nearby. In 2000, a shelter worker in Tennessee was asphyxiated to death while operating a faulty gas chamber. And in 1997, a veterinarian in Illinois was severely injured while operating the gas chamber.
Thirty seconds.
In contrast, there are no documented reports of any shelter worker being killed from accidental injection of sodium pentobarbital. And I pass my time over to Jay Bresch. Thank you.
You're out of your time, but he gets his new five minutes. And we appreciate your volunteering at the shelter, by the way. Okay?
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Jay Bresch, also a volunteer at the West Valley Animal Shelter. I'll continue to speak on this issue. The 2007 American Veterinary Medical Association Guidelines on Euthanasia, which are posted on the West Valley City website, state, "Carbon monoxide is extremely hazardous for personnel because it is highly toxic and difficult to detect. The advantages of using barbiturates for euthanasia in small animals far outweigh the disadvantages. Intravenous injection of barbituric acid derivative is a preferred method for euthanasia of dogs, cats, other small animals, and horses." In my opinion, and what appears to be the opinion of many others, it is simply too dangerous to subject shelter workers to carbon monoxide when the much safer injection method is available for use. Seems to me that most humans should wish to treat other living creatures humanely, but I understand that this is often not the case. But I do feel that generally, everyone is concerned about decreasing expenses, which is where my last point for the evening lies. The American Humane Association recently commissioned a study on the cost associated between euthanasia by injection and gas, using data from an animal sheltering organization in North Carolina. The number of dogs and cats euthanized in 2007 was 5,427. The study, which is applicable to other jurisdictions, shows that the cost of carbon monoxide gas is $4.98 per animal. The cost without a tranquilizer is $4.66 per animal. The cost of injection, however, is only $2.29 per animal. Figures from North Carolina comparable to other states, thus, euthanasia by injection is far more cost-effective than gas, as the approximate cost of tranquilizer is $0.32. For every $4.60, the shelter spends to put down an animal in the gas chamber without a tranquilizer that could instead euthanize two animals with a tranquilizer. This is difficult to argue with. All cruelty aside, the gas chamber is more than twice as expensive as the injection. This alone should be reason enough to choose the latter over the former, even if one has zero interest in being humane. The Humane Society of the United States explains this perfectly by stating, "Carbon monoxide gas is without question an unacceptable method of euthanasia in states where shelters can legally obtain and administer sodium pentobarbital." The shelter has access to sodium pentobarbital, yet continues to use the gas chamber. In addition to this, the public is clearly dissatisfied with the high euthanasia rates in the shelter, which I've been told are due to the lack of staff to take care of the animals. Since decreasing euthanasia is one of the goals clearly listed in the 2011/12 West Valley City Adopted Annual Budget booklet, it only makes sense to stop the dangerous, inhumane, and twice as expensive method of carbon monoxide euthanasia and switch to sodium pentobarbital injection. With approximate $2.30 saved per euthanized animal, perhaps West Valley City could use the excess funds to provide more staff for the shelter or implement new shelter hours, which are actually reasonable. The current shelter hours are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, when the shelters close on the weekends. Most people work during this time and do not have the option to come on the weekends. If the shelter and city are truly interested in decreasing euthanasia rates, as stated in the budget booklet, extended hours or opening on some weekends is absolutely necessary.
Thirty seconds.
The annual budget booklet shows the words "unity, pride, progress" under the West Valley City logo. In order for these words to accurately describe the city, we need to put an end to the barbaric, archaic, dangerous, inhumane, and expensive practice of carbon monoxide euthanasia. Work together to decrease high euthanasia rates, so we can take part in the progress made and dispose of the West Valley City Animal Shelter's poor reputation. Thank you so much for your time and thank you to everyone here who came to show their support.
You have three seconds left. I'm impressed. Lane Meacham. Meacham? Meacham? Meacham. Thank you, Mr. Meacham.
I vote for barbiturates.
Barbiturates.
I have a conflict of interest because I'm a psychotherapist that could gain from my complaint. And my complaint, of course, is just another complaint, along with many, regarding Keith Stoney. Now, I know the first response is going to be, "That's a judiciary matter and there's a separation of powers," which of course, the city council is the executive branch. But I don't think that's completely right in that according to Attorney General's office and District Attorney's office, any action against Judge Stoney would have to be defended by the city, which could be 200,000, 300,000, 400,000, no matter, determined by the length of time and discovery and this kind of thing. Now, I've learned tonight that that may not be true, that the judge may be just out to fend for himself and have to pay for his own legal fees, but I kind of doubt that. I think that he would sue the city for recompense and have the city underwrite his legal expenses. What's happening is Judge Stoney has not only my complaint to the judicial council, but another one that's coming down from the Supreme Court just recently for censure because he sends all of the referrals to just one provider, positive adjustments. I've left a copy of the complaint to the judicial council, Mr. Colin Winchester, in each of your mailboxes, but we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, a lot of these people made a mistake. They've had a drink at one of your many bars and got a DUI, and that doesn't mean they're necessarily immoral rotten people. It means they made a mistake. But they also vote. And to send them to the most expensive program, it's all alike, or to Utah for that matter, and have Judge Stoney collect if they don't pay on time or if they don't show up. I've tried to meet with Judge Stoney three different times. One time, I was sitting in the court and he even stopped the court and asked me to come up and ask me what I wanted. And I says, "Well, you're sending them all over here to one provider." And I said, "Just give them a list of the 50 providers that are approved by the state and have them go select the most cost-effective provider that's in their neighborhood." And he said, "Oh, okay, but it's never going to happen." He has a woman sit there, named Pearl, at a table, her own table, and he sends 100% of the referrals to her. She in turn monitors their performance if they don't come to their sessions or don't pay. The organization does an order to show cause and self-notarizes it, even though they're not attorneys, and turns that into the judge, and then he hauls everybody in for an order to show cause hearing as to why they don't pay. I said, "Well, why are you collecting for these groups? Have them have AAA collections or somebody." "Oh, I think they ought to pay." I says, "Well, what if they take out bankruptcy?" And I've been to all their treatment sessions, which the law, you know, prescribes. And then what do you do? He says, "Oh, well, then I just let them go." But it just, once again, it's just another black eye to West Valley City. There is a separation of powers, but people don't make those distinctions. They say, "Oh, another Keith Stoney deal." You know, the other thing is, he's regularly doing domestic violence cases, which part of the deal was when he got his plea in abeyance for the battering charge against his two wives, was that he not officiate over domestic violence cases. Now-
Two seconds, Mr. Meacham.
I don't think women should have to be at his mercy for a decision either. He's going to err on, you know, being too easy or too tough or whatever his biases may concern. But I've left a copy of the Judicial Conduct Commission paper in your mailboxes, and I hope that somebody takes it seriously because I'm seeking counsel for legal action against him personally. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. We appreciate the written information as well, which anyone's always welcome to provide us. Michelle Johnson.
Hi. Michelle Johnson. I live in West Valley. I was approached and started volunteering at the shelter. I was there for two years, me and my daughter, who is now 13. We have personally watched the animals go through the gas chamber, you know, go to that door and have to say goodbye, perfectly healthy animals, when the fact was, we had room. It was the fact that they'd been over their 30 days. I know we are busy. We are a big city that needs to obviously get spay and neuter done, and something needs to be done about the pet population. But putting them in a gas chamber is totally inhumane. I've personally watched the injection. I have personally held animals while they've had the injection. And I do believe in my heart, truly, it is the best way to go. They've said it's cheaper. They've said, you know, everything else. But I personally, I've held a rabbit. I've held a bird. I've watched the euthanasia. You know, I haven't personally watched the gas chamber because it would horrify me. But I've heard enough news about it. I've been in the shelter when they've used it and when they've had to use it over and over again. Andrea was just one of the examples that they actually caught. You know, the fact that she was in the garbage can and she made a noise, she was saved. But how many other times have they missed that? How many other times have they thrown the animals in there and not double-checked it? When you're doing the injection, you do have to double-check the heart. And it is something you can, you know, you're there with the animal the whole time. Not putting them in this chamber and walking out of the room, going back to check on them later. It's inhumane. It's not something you wouldn't want a doctor come in, give you the drugs to die, and walk out of the room. And who cares if you suffered? This is something that I truly believe in, and this is something that needs to be stopped. It does not need to be used like it is, and it is used more than 80% of the time. The employees there are looked down upon if they do, you know, choose not to use the gas chamber. They believe it to be, I'm assuming the director believes it to be, you know, more time management to just shove them in there. And I believe it to be more inhumane. We need people in that shelter that actually care about the animals. There's only a couple that you can actually say love the animals. And me, being an animal person and someone who works with the rescues and tries to find their homes, I am the one that was supposed to pull Andrea. The day I was supposed to pull Andrea, I actually took another medically needed cat. So I feel very, very much at heart what Andrea had to go through. She did end up in the rescue I was with and who I was pulling. But knowing what she had to go through, perfectly healthy animal, she had to go through it twice, in a bag and in a freezer. It's not right. Please change it. Please put it to lethal injection. Please. I mean, seriously, if we give it to our people, we wouldn't put them in a gas chamber to die. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Jacob.
Julie.
Jacob, excuse me.
I reside in West Valley. Thank you. I think before we look even at the gas chamber situation, we really need to look at the bigger picture of why is that created in the first place? Why are you considered a high-kill shelter? One, the why behind a high-kill shelter, your hours of operation are not conducive to family people, single people, career people. You aren't even open on a Saturday. I work Monday through Friday. How could I ever come in if I wanted to adopt a dog, adopt Holly, for instance, who bless her heart is sitting there. She's at her 30-day notice. Guess what? She may get thrown in the gas chamber tomorrow. Am I comfortable with that as a resident? Absolutely not. I have to know if I'm going to stay in this community. It's going to be a community that's progressive one, that you mentioned, that there's one of pride, but pride includes social conscience. And I don't see it in the city of West Valley, not with a gas chamber. Even John Fox, who's the investigative person for Humane Society of Utah, said, "This is a barbaric, antiquated, inhumane way to treat animals." Even Alabama, Alabama, folks. Alabama just came out. Guess what? They have 30 days to get rid of the gas chambers. Utah's left on the plate. What are we going to do, folks? It's time to change. Your hours of operation needs to change, one. If the shelter can ever hope to increase its adoption rate of dogs and cats, it must operate at least two Saturdays each month and a one evening to 8:00 p.m. during the week. Second, education. This is huge. If the city wants to decrease the number of cats and dogs coming into the shelter, it must first educate people of the community on, one, responsible pet ownership, and, two, the real cost of having a pet. Many, many people in this community, given it's been a farming community, look at dogs and cats analogous to their household recyclables. Please, it's time to change that. It's time to change that perception. Utah's population has long held the attitude that animals are disposable like this community. And please start providing education in the schools and in high-traffic public areas like malls, libraries, the multicultural center, recreation centers about pet ownership, spay-neuter services, local adoption events. And last, please hire a full-time employee to do this. I know you've decreased funding by, what, $25,000? Look at all the volunteers. I can guarantee you that if you added up the hours committed, committed, pro bono, you would have the equivalent of one full-time employee to the tune of probably $40,000 a year. If you want to save money, please start working with us. I don't say this lightly. I want to stay in this community. I took over a foreclosure condo because I like the things going on in this community. However, the gas chamber has got to stop. It's got to start with education. Third, a high-kill shelter is also based on feral community and abandoned cats. I live in a gated condo community off Redwood. In the last five months, I have trapped over 30 cats, and I've spent over $700 vetting, neutering, spaying, releasing on my own. The attitude of this community is to just leave a cat or a dog behind. Education's got to lay the foundation for shifting from a high-kill shelter to a lower kill. And that also includes taking a second look at this gas chamber. If Alabama can do it, by God, so can Uti. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jacob. And we have time in our comment period tonight for one more. Julio Gomez. And I realize there's three of you that signed up, but we don't have time for this evening. And you're welcome to come back next week and re-sign up or communicate with us via email or written, or maybe those who spoke tonight touched on some of the issues that were near and dear to you and your signatures on here do represent to us that there were others who wanted to speak on this issue. Mr. Gomez.
Thanks. My name is Julio Gomez. And years ago, my first animal rescue enabled me to start what's called Karma, Karma's Animal Rescuing Maintenance Alliance. I volunteer a lot of my time, 90% of my free time, to helping homeless animals, also educating people about the importance of spay and neutering. We live in a civilized society here. It's very evident. And unfortunately, there's a lot of ignorance when it comes to pets and animals around here. I see it daily when I'm out trying to rescue animals, trying to educate people on the importance of spay and neutering. The consequence of the ignorance are the poor animals that are in the shelters. They need to be there. And going back to what I said as far as being a civilized society, I just want to take a moment here to ask all of you to look inside yourselves, think about your morals, your care for animals, and the least we can do if we want to continue to be a civilized society and have to euthanize these animals, which is an unfortunate consequence of the overpopulation, is we do it in a dignified way. Be compassionate. of the overpopulation, is we do it in a dignified way, be compassionate, and when these animals leave us, we can know, you 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 can know, and you can know that these animals left in a very dignified manner. The word "gas chamber" is not a word that when people hear, they think about civilization and a civilized society, so I ask that you please abolish the gas chamber for animals here in Utah. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so we as a council have a feel, how many came today to support this issue, just by show of hands? Oh, what issue? We've had all the speakers but one today talk about the animal issue, so that was the issue I was referring to. So, the hands again, just to see. Okay? I'm just curious, keep your hands up if you live in West Valley City, just so where is your percentage? Okay, fair number of you? Also, raise your hand if you volunteered in the gas shelter before, or gas shelter, before you didn't sleep there, in the animal shelter before, of West Valley City. Okay? We appreciate all of you who have volunteered. We appreciate all of you who came out tonight and who've also let your opinions known via emails. We've talked, and we've received numerous emails. I think I get twenty a day nowadays, from Melbourne, Australia, to Indianapolis, Indiana, on this issue, so you're organized and passionate and persistent, we felt that in your remarks tonight. Quick question for the city manager, and then any response that you wanted to make on the staff. I know with a number of people concerned about this issue here tonight, you mentioned that may be appropriate. Do we, at our shelter, are they ever euthanized in groups, or are they, do they?
I'm perfectly capable of answering that question, thanks. They are sometimes euthanized in groups in the gas chamber, that's correct. I can't remember how many exactly, the capacity is, like, eight cats? Do you do more than one dog, or? So, yes, in groups they are euthanized.
Okay, that was brought up, and...
Although I might also point out that when they are euthanized, they're kept separate, there's not, they're in separate facilities, cages, whatnot, so that they're...
Actually, that's what I meant, are they ever in the same cage?
Gas chamber itself is one large unit, and then the animals, as they're brought in, are separated individually.
Okay. Any comments you want to make on this topic before we go on?
I know it's not normal that in the public comment period that we do this, but I'll try to be brief, just make a couple of comments.
It's also not normal to have so many people so passionate about one issue, so we do appreciate any response.
So, we appreciate that, as you mentioned, Mayor, there is indeed, there is indeed, that's all right, there's, there's a group of people that are very passionate about this issue, and they've made that passion known for a long time, since before the animal shelter was even constructed. The animal shelter's been open for two years now, we've got long experience with operating it in all of its aspects, and we've heard all of the issues that were brought up tonight at the podium, as far as various reasons why you shouldn't operate a gas chamber, and in the end, it simply boils down to, from a staff and a policy standpoint, we just do not agree. We don't agree that it's inhumane, we don't agree that it's dangerous, as long as facilities maintained properly, and we don't agree that it's cheaper. We also now have two years of operation to back us up in those, in that opinion. We also don't force one use or the other, which I think most of the council knows that already, and I'm pretty sure that the group that is here knows that as well. We leave the choice as to method of euthanasia up to the employees actually administering the euthanasia, and I appreciate some polite response out there. Everybody who stood and was at the podium was... I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I thought you were making a joke.
Not making a joke. Take this issue very seriously, as those of you who came up to the podium do. So, now I've kind of forgotten what my, where I was at in my comments.
You mentioned how they have a, the shelter workers have a choice...
That's right, the shelter workers have a choice in their method, and that's borne out in the stats of what method of euthanasia is chosen. Somebody, one of the speakers, made the comment that I think it was eighty percent or more of the animals are euthanized in the gas chamber. That's not correct. One person also said that more than half of the animals are euthanized in the gas chamber, which is very close to correct. There's fifty-one percent of the animals are euthanized in the gas chamber, forty-nine percent are by lethal injection. Why is that choice made? The choice is made because of the various different circumstances of the animals that are in question. Sometimes, it is more humane to euthanize by lethal injection, and the employee that has to make that choice does so. Sometimes, it's more humane to put them in the gas chamber, although for some reason which personally I don't understand, somehow euthanizing by gas is better than sticking a needle in your arm with, with a chemical. To me, neither one of those is a preferable choice. I agreed with the point that was made, that the ultimate goal of what you're looking for here is a lower euthanasia rate. Unfortunately, we do, we are not in the, in the business of, of taking ourselves, on ourselves, direct responsibility from a service standpoint of educating the populace and trying to change their attitudes as to how they, they take care of their animals, or responsibly maintain their animals, other than what we do as a normal course of events through the chamber itself. I'm sorry, the animal shelter, another forty you didn't sleep like the mayor, like the mayor made. I also might point out that some of the arguments that were made, we actually do agree with. For example, it's not appropriate to put the old, or the young, or the injured, those that are less able to absorb oxygen, and therefore, same thought of carbon monoxide, in the gas chamber, and so those are, by policy, and I hope that, as a matter of course, they're euthanized by the, by the lethal injection. And then I guess the final point I want to make here, Mayor, is it is unfair, the point that was made here at the podium in some of the prepared comments, to say that our staff or our attention or our policy is motivated by lack of care for the animals or the welfare of what happens to those animals. It's entirely motivated by what's the best course for the animal. We don't want to euthanize any animal, but when that becomes necessary, then I trust, and we leave it up to the employees that are there to make the choice of which of the methods that they want to use.
And thank you, Mayor.
What would you do if you did?
Oh, sir, you're out of, you're out of work.
Yep, let me also make that, I can just reinforce their role there, Mayor. This, as I mentioned at the beginning, this is not a debate scenario here, and as I mentioned, the only reason I'm making these comments is so that you have some sort of response and know what the staff and the administration's position is here. Normally, in the public comment session, they, the council will take commentary from the podium, and then that's it, then they'll take it back for consideration and respond to this outside that setting.
We appreciate hearing that the staff should you point on this issue. One last question, this is a personal curiosity. I know when this first came up a couple of years ago, some elected officials visited the shelter and actually witnessed euthanasia by both methods. Is that an option that's still open for...
That is, though we've had that request made a number of times in the past, and certainly, anybody who wants to come down and miss the various methods of those is welcome to do so.
I'm ashamed to admit, I haven't been down there to personally view the horrible thing of euthanasia. We all agree it's horrible, and we'd rather not have to do it at all, but I think it may be time for some of us to go personally view it and consider it a way, both what the staff has said, as well as what many in the public have said, as we continue to find the best way to deal with the abandoned animals in our community. Thank you. Council, are there any other comments on this topic? Okay. We go on item number seven tonight. We do have a public hearing regarding reopening the fiscal year 2011-2012 budget. Mr. Pyle, if you could please introduce ordinance number twelve oh one.
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is for the purpose of considering the twice-year adjustments to the budget we make. There are a number of reasons why this happens, so we have grant programs that are accepted or have to be administered or amended. We also have capital projects, for example, to carry over from one year to the next, or may change, or may be started during the year. So, twice a year, in December and June, we go through a budget opening through all the fiscal units of the city, and this is the occasion of that halfway through the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. I now open the public hearing regarding ordinance twelve dash zero one. Is anyone here today to speak on that topic? Budget's less popular than pets tonight. Signal I will close the public hearing. Turn it over to my colleagues on the council for any action or questions. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance twelve oh one. Let it open.
Second.
Thank you. We have a budget, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion to twelve oh one? Okay, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Twelve oh one passes unanimously. Mr. Pyle, if you could please introduce twelve dash zero two.
Thank you, sir. This is approval of a delay agreement for some curb gutter and sidewalk improvements at Seventy-Ten West Parkway Boulevard. Normally, this would be a consent agenda item, but since there was only one of them, we put on the resolution.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one? We're going to let our new council members make a motion a second on this if they want, just to break them in. All right. Anyone?
So, you said two, is it actually one? We'll hold them together.
Well, it's twelve oh one, twelve oh two is ahead late.
Yeah, so it wouldn't have been on your advance agenda, it'd be on the one that came out today.
Well, with the start of the new year, the budget opening was ordinance twelve oh one, and now we're getting to resolution twelve oh two.
Oh, right. That's a better way to phrase it.
I can move for approval of resolution twelve oh one.
Would you like to second that, Mr. Hume?
If aye.
You don't have to.
You don't have to, I'm just kidding.
I'll second that.
Great, thanks. Freshman hazing, sorry. All right, so we have a motion, a second on that resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. This second resolution, twelve dash two, twelve dash zero two, is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement between the RDA and Wadman Corporation for construction at the Promenade Plaza here in the Fairborn Station Project. Wadman, as you'll remember, is a construction company doing that work. Because the city has ongoing legal responsibility for operation and maintenance of that project, but we haven't been part of the, the contract as originally agreed to an agreement, we need to correct that, and this, this resolution would approve that. There's no fiscal impact, and there's no construction change can proposed at this time.
All right, thank you. Council, any discussion or motion on resolution twelve dash zero two?
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution twelve dash zero two. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of approving twelve oh two, say aye.
Aye.
That, two, passes unanimously. I understand there's not a need for an executive session tonight, so we go to item ten, which is to adjourn.
And let's go ahead and have a meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency.
Oh, we ought to just add, for those visiting, we have three brief meetings, two brief meetings, right after our council meeting, where we wear different hats, the first one being is the redevelopment agency.
Thank you, Mayor. I call the order, the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency. Note that we have had an opening ceremony, all members of this agency are present. We have before us minutes of the special regular meeting in November twenty-second, 2011, and the regular meeting of December sixth, 2011.
I would move for approval of the minutes of September, or November twenty-second and December sixth, 2011.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
That appears to have passed, and, see, we do have a resolution today. Any other communications or report?
Yes, sir. I was just going to give you a quick update on the progress of the RDA project at Fairborn Station over the last couple, month or so, since you hadn't, we haven't been around for a while, thought you might be interested. Also, the demolition of the single-family homes along Holmberg and, or the east side of Holmberg and north side of Lehman is complete, the construction of the hotel is proceeding, including, at least last I saw, to the elevator shafts going into that and a lot of the foundation work, and the Promenade Plaza work is proceeding as well.
Thank you. Everything on schedule then?
Looks like it, for the present.
Well, that's good. We do have a public hearing tonight. Would you reduce that, please?
Yes, thank you, sir. The public hearing is for purposes of considering the budget opening that would be appropriate to the redevelopment agency, the same as was considered in the previous meeting for the city.
Thank you. Open the public hearing to consider resolution number twelve dash zero one. If anybody has come to speak on this matter, please make yourself known. Doesn't appear that anybody's come to speak on this matter either. By close the public hearing and ask this body to consider resolution twelve dash zero one.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve resolution twelve oh one.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call a question. Those in favor of approving resolution twelve dash zero one, please say aye.
Aye.
That resolution has passed. Mr. Pyle, we have resolution twelve zero two, please.
Thank you, sir. This resolution is the RDA counterpart of the same resolution that was approved in the previous meeting concerning the agreement between the RDA, Wadman Corporation, and the city for construction of the Promenade Plaza.
Just out of curiosity, if we don't approve this as an RDA, but we've approved it as a city council, where does that leave us?
Well, what I would do then at that point is go back and throw it in the legal council's lap and say, "Okay, guys, figure this out. We got approval on one side and not on the other."
Well, we'd better consider it...
Plus, you'd make Sherry mad, and I would want to...
Yeah, Sherry, yeah, he gets Sherry all out of sorts, and you know what?
That's why I asked. We have before us resolution twelve dash zero two. Any discussion or motion regarding that resolution?
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor of approving resolution twelve dash zero two, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That also passes, that concludes the business of this body, and we therefore stand adjourned.
Call the order, the West Valley City Hight housing authority. We've had the roll call and opening ceremony. We have the minutes for December sixth that need to be voted on.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the minutes of December sixth, 2011. Let it be a meeting.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks like we just have a couple items on the agenda. We have one public hearing. Wayne, I'll turn the time over to you for that public hearing.
Thanks, sir. This is the budget opening consideration, same as the previous two meetings.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the reopening of the fiscal year 2011-2012 budget. Is anybody here to speak on the budget? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council for action.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve resolution twelve oh one, this one item for the housing authority.
We have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Have one resolution. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. This resolution would designate our city attorney, Mr. J. Eric Bunderson, as a trustee to sign all documents associated with the housing authority.
We have the resolution before us.
I would move for approval of resolution twelve dash zero two.
Have a motion?
I'd like to make a comment on this resolution. It's my understanding that such a trustee must be an attorney licensed by the bar of the state of Utah, or I think a trust company. Is that, can we find out if that's correct?
Well, yes, sir, and since I can't actually speak to the technical requirement, I'll refer that to Mr. Bunderson.
Yes, sir, I believe that is the case. It was easier for us to appoint an active member of the bar as opposed to the trust company.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. And I do know that our previous trustee was Mr. Catton, and...
Previous city attorney.
Who was the previous city attorney, and I don't know if we are just proceeding along that path because that's the way we liked it, or by tradition, or if we actually examined the trust option, or if there's any actual benefit to be gained from that, is there...
Budget, I just want to make the point that our choices are limited here somewhat, and nothing against Derek.
Okay.
I think that this would be an appropriate action, and I think we're in need of a second, is that right, Mr. Chair? With that said, I'll second the motion to approve resolution twelve dash zero two.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes, and that brings us to... That passes, and that brings us to the adjournment.